Good morning, welcome everyone. Today is September 30th, 2019. It's nine o'clock in the morning. Welcome to the Logan County Commissioners Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please rise for the flag.
The flag will be released to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, not God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, again, welcome all. Item three, any citizen desiring to be heard. If you'd like to speak, please give your name to the clerk and listen. Hearing none. Item four, consideration of possible action on approving minutes of September 13th, 2019.
I'll make a motion. I'll second Mike's motion.
I have a motion and a second.
I have two motions, one second.
Two motions and a second. Second, say it. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is unanimous. All right. Item five, I understand Mr. Emerson can't be here today, so we will table item five until our next meeting.
I've already added it to the seventh agenda.
Thank you ma'am, thank you very much. Add it to the seventh. Okay. Drum roll please. Item six, open sealed bid, 2019-8 for base repairs for period one, September 2019 through December 31st, 2019, and consideration of possible action to award that bid.
Received one bid from Atlas Paving Company, and just so that you all know, we sent seven bid packets out.
Right. Thank you very much ma'am. Received one, I don't have a state for today. It's an awful lot of... Can you make heads or tails of any of that?
District one, zone one.
Yeah, but I mean the prices, what is that?
What are they pricing? $275 a ton, $185 a ton. Does that include milling it down?
I would assume so. Because we got laid in place for a lot cheaper than that.
I'd say a hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Yeah.
They're gonna charge $5,000 to move out there.
Well, and we talked about that for Sonic, you know, they need to have some sort of a fee.
I don't know if they added it back in, but the actual bid specs called for it to be milled using milling machines specifically designed to mill asphalt to a depth of six inches or more if necessary to stabilize base, lay new asphalt in milled area using no more than 10% recycled HMA type A, then completed patch must align with existing asphalt, no more than a quarter inch variance, bid price to be per ton of asphalt used to complete repair and is to include all associated costs for equipment, labor, and materials. Then we did it by the zones like we do the other asphalt bid. So that was the basic, what that price should include. Oh, and then any traffic control and things like that.
Get with it? Well, it's all we got, right? So if that's what we need. Troy, you need to...
Is this, well, we had asked on the specs page, did they not include it? We asked them for their minimum and maximum widths of milling equipment. Did they include that?
I haven't seen that yet. I don't think they put one. See, the challenge that we have with those folks when they bid by the ton, this is gonna get expensive because their minimum width on the mill's like 10 foot. They don't have a smaller mill. So they can't, they can't mill out the collapsed areas where the trucks, you know, the heavy trucks will rut an area, right? So you gotta rut on one side, rut in the middle, and a nice smooth spot in between the two. Basically, you need to take the ruts out, mill the ruts out, and do base repairs there if you need base repairs before you overlay it, right? So that's kind of a repair that needs to be done. But anytime, but when they're, they're gonna take a 10-foot swath and we're gonna pay for the ton by the ton to put it back, we're actually taking, they're actually taking material out that doesn't need to be taken out, and we're paying. That's kind of why you're...
I think they can do a seven-foot swath as...
How's that little asphalt zipper working? That's four foot.
We have one that's got a 36-inch that goes on a skid steer. That works really well.
But we have that asphalt zipper.
Yeah, the asphalt zipper works, it's okay for small jobs.
Well, that's what it is, a four footer.
But not for, not for a mile or two, you know, it's...
Right, right, right.
So anyway.
It's great for a little four-foot hole, and certainly we'd like to start using maybe...
Minimum width, seven feet. I guess this is what we got, and might as well accept that they went to the trouble to do that if I, if I need that kind of work.
So you're making the motion?
Yes, I'll make the motion, accept that bid.
I'll second Marvin's motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right. Item seven, consideration of possible action to approve county treasurer's transcript of proceedings on county resale deed for the following property. Aduko Investment Incorporated, East Capri, South 36 Feet of lots, one through three, block 71. A whole $121.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Not for me, ma'am.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. You guys wanna jump to 13th so these guys can hit the...
I was making a... I don't care.
Either way, we'll get there, bitch.
I know, I know. It's like Christmas, you know, you gotta use a present. Maybe, hopefully it is.
It's all, all, two of them.
Yeah, I'm good. We're good on that. Okay, so we'll jump to item 13, consideration of possible action to approve agreement between cash and fire department and chief, fire, and safety company for the purchase of a 2019 E1 rescue pumper in the amount of $444,624.00. Truck to be leased purchased when complete.
So this is a shit deal or...
So, so here's, here's what it is. The truck is available on a contract through Sourcewell, which is the cooperative purchasing that we're allowed to use. In that Sourcewell contract was the ability to lease purchase. However, the, the financer that, that was part of that actually was overpriced. We got a competitive price for the lease purchase with Welch State Bank right here in Logan and Oklahoma. What chief has asked for, the purpose of this item today is they just want, it's something enshrining an official, that this project is moving ahead so that they're not on the hook. They just wanna know for sure officially that they can go ahead, because this truck is gonna be constructed upon the order. It won't be ready till the end of the year. Cash and fire department's gonna put a $200,000 cash down on it, so when all the, at the end of the year, when the lease is all done, the lease will be for 244. But this, this was just for chief to know to proceed with the construction of the vehicle.
I don't have a problem with it.
I move with approval of the request.
I do have, did y'all get a sales tax from Kingfisher County?
We do have a sales tax from Kingfisher as well.
Is that a permanent tax or...
No, we actually just, I wanna say beginning of 2018, lost 90% of our sales tax. They're building a new jail over there. And so they, they, it was an emergency fund that was approved for all emergency services, and they rewrote the, the tax on the, on the new vote in 2018, and 90% of the funds went to the sheriff's office, so we're operating on 10% of what we used to over there.
Still doing all right. I mean, you're buying a $400 and a half million truck.
Wow, and that's the reason we, when we can't buy it outright, that's the reason we went through on lease on it, was we don't want the account to ever get real, real low. So we're gonna put our, our money down and then allow it to build back up with the lease as well to keep our account here stable. Because I'm not sure, the new, the new sales tax there is another 10-year tax, so...
I'll second your motion, ma'am. Thanks.
Okay, motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right. Back to item eight. Consideration of possible action to approve ingress and egress agreement with Robert J. Wagner in part of Southeast Quarter, Section Point Two, 15 North, Three West for District One. This gentleman has got a whole bunch of limb debris that was taken off of his trees by the storm ahead come through, and we need to get in there and help him crack some of that stuff out. But I moved, it could be approved.
You said you did make a motion?
Yes, sir.
I'll second your motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item nine, consideration of possible action to approve NRCS assurance relating to real property acquisition forms for the following NRCS projects in District Three. Bank stabilization, County Road 69 Broadway, County Road 65, Otter Creek, and County Road 69 in Douglas West.
I think these are gonna be just the chairman.
Here's...
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve.
I'll second.
Get these projects done.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on these? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. If he signs, we'll get on to the next one.
Sure, so I can take the money from fire departments.
Think they'd at least use it for something like downed. Item ten. Are we finished here?
Yes, sir.
All right. Item ten, consideration of possible action to approve resolution accepting $3,000 donation from Sooner Answer Service to District Two for gravel on County Road 75.
I'll make a motion to accept a $3,000 donation on County Road 75. Is that between, like, State Highway 74 and...
33. Going west, sorry.
I'll second Mike's motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye. It says County Road 75 though, so I'm assuming we can put it anywhere on 75.
Yeah, well, I mean, you got part of that road too, don't you?
Oh, I think he wants it going District Two. He might be upset if it went to District Three. All right.
All right. All right. Item eleven, consideration of possible action to approve resolution accepting $593.70 donation from Norma Jean Morris to District Two for culvert placed at 7500 East Forest Hills Road.
Very nicely. I'd make a motion to accept.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item twelve, consideration of possible action to approve FY 2019, 2020 maintenance agreement with Clifford Power for generator at sheriff's office. This is the emergency generator, y'all?
I'm sure it is.
I move with approval.
I second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item fourteen, consideration of possible action to acknowledge receipt of notice of tort claim from Janet Riggs and forward to Echo County Claims, or I guess they're, whatever they do there.
I'll make the motion to accept this claim.
Acknowledge receipt.
To acknowledge the claim to go to our claims.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item fifteen, consideration of possible action to formalize Logan County Annual Priority Plan as budgeted as required by law as outlined in top 69, section 601.3, and forward this plan subject to change by the county, subject to be changed by the county to be filed by the Logan County Clerk and the Oklahoma Department of Transportation. Go back and look at top 69, this is an annual requirement that by 30 September every year, we're required to file this plan. This is, not only includes SERV money, but all, all federal and all state funds that the county receives. This is a requirement for us to do, do that, make that plan on how we're gonna use those funds and send it forward. That's my interpretation, I guess. Reason I brought this forward is once again, I honestly, I really believe that STP funds, Monty, you brought up last time we talked about, there were some bridge funds that, at the CED they talked about, that could be used, they thought could be used for, for our roads instead of just bridges. We were under the impression that they could only be used for bridges, and they were gonna check on that. We, I haven't heard anything back from, from that yet, you know, on whether we can use those for roads, and if we can, my, my recommendation is that we don't use that money to offset or to add to SERV money that the Department of Transportation decides where we're gonna use that and how we're gonna use it. I, I think we should use our other funds that we get to maintain the systems we have today. And when I, when I say that, I mean, we should be probably concentrating on what they're calling major, county major collectors. We've got so many, we've got so many roads in South County that are paved, that are falling apart, that are considered major collectors, and nobody really pays attention to, to that designation other than, I think the state might get some extra money from the feds, but it never gets down to us on it. My, my point is, I, I brought this little map of major collectors here. I've got Broadway from Highway 33 to Waterloo Road Circle. That's a county major collector that's falling apart on us. That carries more traffic than probably anything, any other roadway in, in Logan County. And also, I've got these four little roads. We got, we got Kelly, Sanofi, and Wesner. All, these, these three roads run, run up and down north-south off Waterloo Road. Those are major collectors. Those are paved, those are falling apart. We don't have the money to do that as a county. We, we, we don't have the money to take care of what we got, yet, like I pointed out at our ACOG meeting, the Department of Transportation made a gift to the county, made a gift to our, our district before I was elected, to select, and they selected Coltrane Road as a SERV project. By the time we get five miles of Coltrane Road done, they, they will have spent approximately $10 to $12 million on five miles of road. Now, that sounds like a nice gift for the county, until you consider that there's a maintenance tale that goes along with that that the county's responsible for. Maintenance on assets normally runs about three times what the asset costs over the life of the asset. So if we figure that road's a 30-year road or 40-year road, you can do the math, you know, gosh, $12 million times three over 40, that's, that's about a million bucks a year extra in maintenance that we were given as a gift along with that road, but people don't consider that. My point is, we shouldn't be building a lot of brand-new roadways in, in Logan County until we can figure out how to take care of what we got. And, and this is where I need the most help right now on this, on this plan. This is where I believe the county needs a lot of work. We, we've got a lot of major collectors. Monty, you got a lot in the north. Mike, you got a lot that's designated, but I'm not sure what those designations buy us. For example, what is it, Meridian? That, that road that runs north-south through Meridian right there? That's a major, that's a major collector, but I tell you what, I would not wanna run down that, that road at night at 40 miles an hour, not, never dri, never driving it before, because you're gonna end up in a ditch. And, and it's not a reflection on you, Mike, but that's just, I mean, we don't have enough, we don't get enough money to take care of the asphalt paved roads that we have today. Yet, we, we go and beg for the state to bless us with another superhighway through our county that they will give back to us and say, now you have to maintain it, and we don't have the money to do that with. Again, I, I think before we start building a lot of new roads on the SERV thing, we need to take care of what we got. And I would just ask for confirmation from the board on that when we move on to something else.
Well, to answer your question on the STP money, you can use it for asphalt. You know, actually, we call it the BR allocations on county level.
Yes, sir.
But when it gets down to them, they're, they're STP for some reason. But the BR funds, the county gets about $187,000 a year that can be used on paved roads that don't have to be a bridge. But that paved road, I mean, if you're gonna use the $187,000, it has to be through the SERV because it has to be engineered, ODOT has to get their, get the $187.
Yeah, we got the streams.
So, so, so I would ask that we go back to the CED and ask them to reconsider, ask ODOT, because this is all self-inflicted gun shop, that's right. All, all of the, all these restrictions they put on us are at the state level. There's, this is something that we, that they've placed on us. There's no, there's no legal law that says that this has to be done this way. This is their regulatory issue. I, I would like for them to reconsider allowing counties that don't get enough money to maintain what we have to use those state and federal funds for resurfacing. I mean, we have a six-month laid-in-place contract, I mean, what is wrong with that? If it doesn't need, if it doesn't need additional rideaway, doesn't need environmental, doesn't need all that, if we just need a, a basic overlay, why in the world would we wanna subject ourselves to the state spending a million dollars a mile to do something that we can do for $100,000, Sean? I, I don't get it.
I mean, the, the BR allocations is federal money, and I don't know if it's the Fed rule or ODOT rule.
Federal.
But...
But it's, it's ODOT's rule. It's ODOT's rule.
On SERV money, it, it is ODOT's.
No, the ODOT's use, restriction on the use of federal money and how we need to do that is a state rule. It's not a federal rule. There's no federal rules on it that, that, we can't use that for overlaying. It doesn't say that anywhere in the federal statutes.
But to allocate the $187,000, you gotta go through the SERV plan because you can't use it on county force projects.
Right. And we can use CBRI money for the matching, which is what has happened. A few years ago, I don't remember exactly when, a bill was introduced, and it had traction, but it never did go any, it never did get completed. Wherein funding, separate funding would be available for the major collector roads, but as I said, it failed. And we do have legislative period coming up. Might be good to find somebody to reintroduce that bid.
Hopefully we can find somebody that cares, Mike.
We have to find somebody to carry it.
No, that cares, not to carry it. They don't really care. If it doesn't involve cutting a ribbon, showing up and drinking punch and sharing cake and getting a picture in the paper, they don't care about doing it.
No.
This ain't, this ain't a high-profile deal. This is just taking care of what we got, and they don't, they don't care to show up for those things. Anyway, on to item 16, I think we're finished here. Consideration of possible action to approve resolution appointing requisitioning officers for various accounts.
I have one for the county clerk.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second? I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item 17, consideration of possible action to approve resolutions, appointing receiving officers for various accounts.
County clerk.
Who's the county clerk?
We went, we went out for a contract on one, had no bids.
No one wanted it.
Nobody wanted the job.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item 18, consideration of possible action on approving the following permanent road crossing permits for Chisholm Oil and Gas. Cross East O, 720 Road, East O, both of them, .3 and .8 miles east of North 229. Anybody got a clue where any of this stuff's at?
Waterloo Road.
Yeah, I think they started on this before they actually got the approval. They called, I believe they had written the checks, so...
Y'all's good, but then I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item 19, consideration of possible action on approving the following temporary road crossing permits for select energy. Waterloo, Simmons and Council, yeah, there we go. Make a motion to approve. I'll second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. So we shall wait. So I guess on that patch by the ton, you gotta figure seven-foot wide swath and then kinda guesstimate how deep we're gonna go down, and you do an estimate on your cost that way, if it's per ton. I guess we can do that. That'll give us a chance to... So Troy, we've moved through item 19.
Okay.
And they, they wait. So I get signed up here. All right. Item 20, consideration of possible action on the consent agenda.
Paywall was moving through. I don't have any transfers.
So Monty, I'm, while we're talking, while we're here and we're talking about CEDs and such, I, I just don't see the advantage of the county. I think, I actually think that if the Department of Transportation, State Department of Transportation and Echo wanna determine what goes, we'll just, we get fixed in our county, we just give them, let them do it, focus on internal, inside the borders. But I can't see any benefit.
I don't know if they're actually picking them. I mean, we're the ones that fill out the five-year plan, and, but they do...
But we, we fill out the five-year plan. But we, we fill out the five, okay, so it's, it's like voting for Democrat or Republican, and that's all that's on the ticket, right? So they give us a five-year plan to fill out, but you can have anything you want, as long as you do it this way, right? So it's, it's not really our plan, it's their plan. I mean, am I humble or anyone's, right? Not so humble.
Well, you know, we all know if, if they would do the right thing, get that money directly to the counties, the projects would get done a lot faster, a lot cheaper, a lot cheaper, and probably better in, in a lot of cases. But the legislature ain't gonna do that. Or the legislature has not done that yet. And then ACO goes down and even lobbies against that decision.
Yeah, people that say that they support the county commissioners don't really support the county commissioners, they support their own level of organization.
I agree with that point. But you know, my, my plan is to figure out how we can allocate that hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars without it ever rolling over to the CED district for them to use it in their hands.
Is that per year or per five-year?
Per year. And we, we're allocated that money the first of October, and we have three months to get it allocated to a project. We can't. I mean, because ODOT's in control of the...
Of the projects.
Of the five-year plan, and, so the only way we could do that, like Oklahoma County, their, the advantage they got is they got their own engineering staff. So they get all their engineering done, and then, so they got that sitting on the shelf, and they can allocate their...
That's the advantage they have at ACO as well, is they, they go in there and apply for federal grant money, they've got an engineering staff right there to do all the engineering work. They get more points on, on the federal grant application, because they've already done the engineering, well, as a board or county, with the funds to do that. We, we don't engineer anything that we're not gonna build, because we can't afford it. But they engineer everything. Like I said, engineers get paid first in that kind of field, so we can't compete with them. We just can't compete with them.
So if money can be used for an overlay, is there a parameter?
No, it can't be used for an overlay. It has to be used by, by, by this, by, according to the state's guidelines. We can't use it for overlays. They can overlay it, but it costs a half million dollars a mile when they do it, at, at a minimum.
It just can't be a county force project. Like, I couldn't take the money and just go build a bridge if someone used a hundred and eighty-seven thousand.
Okay, so, so the hundred and eighty-seven thousand is available tomorrow, is that correct? And we have four projects that are on our current SERV plan, so that can be applied to one of these, am I...
Has to be, has to be. It has to be. We don't get a choice.
If you have the NIFA report and all that done, you can allocate it to that project, but we don't do that, because we're going through ODOT, so we don't have to.
Okay, but I guess I'm just trying to understand, a hundred and eighty-seven can only go to one of these four projects that are on our current five-year plan?
That's what I understand. That's what our priorities are. No, it's not what our priorities are. Oh, the four-year plan, that's not our priorities. Our priorities are fixing roads and bridges in Logan County. That has absolutely nothing to do with ODOT's five-year plan. Nothing to do with it.
Right.
That has to do with them making their organization bigger and growing ODOT and growing CEDs and...
So they selected those four roads?
Sir?
They, they selected those four roads?
Those four projects? They've restricted our choices down to where you can pick anything you want...
Yes, sir.
On this shelf.
All right.
Right here, right?
Any shelf you wanna create...
Yeah, it's, it's kinda like that, that scene in the movie The Jerk. You might wanna look at that. It, it talks about... Yeah, you can pick.
Yeah.
Shooting for a bear? No, no, you didn't get that one, but you can pick, you can restrict up... No, it's, it, we don't get the choice to do what's best for our people that we represent. It just doesn't work for us. I guess what I'm saying, Mike, is I'm, I'm up for letting them pick what to do, because it didn't really matter, when it comes right down to it.
Well, is there one of these projects that you'd more bang for the buck?
No. No, every one of those projects cost us money in the long run.
We had four miles of Douglas. Overlay for one point one million dollars. Overlay is, of course, a heck of a lot cheaper, but then it didn't, it had all its five-degree slopes and everything in it already. The only thing it didn't have was shoulders in a lot of places. And then we used CIRB as a match on that.
Well, if it can only be applied to one of these four... They've already let Crescent Creek Bridge, correct?
They have not, because now, the Corps of Engineers has come up with another four oh four permit that has to be done.
I thought I was ready to let it.
It was.
It was.
The Corps of Engineers came up with this four oh four permit.
Somebody else needs, somebody else needs some more money.
Yeah.
Feds.
So what happened is that, that bridge has been open all this time, so we really wasn't in a great big hurry, and we'd like to get it done, but it washed out during flood. So it was supposed to let, you know, like, three months ago. Well, now they can't let the project, because the Corps of Engineers wants this four oh four permit. So meantime, it's washed out, so I had to go open it up with our own funds, which they should be up there building it right now. But there's no way, at the, at the CED meeting, I talked to Randy Robinson, Melissa Davis, Brandon, several of them, there's no way we can allocate that hundred and eighty-seven thousand this year to any project. And so it's gonna roll into the CED district. If no one in our CED five can use the money, then it goes to the state's CED.
But why can't it be? They're doing all the engineering and stuff right now.
Because we had a manager at CED for several years, at least five that I know of, that wasn't doing anything but drawing the damn paycheck. That's the way government works. That's supposed to be...
Often county government doesn't work that way.
That's supposed to be helping counties, right? That's the way government organizations work, that are supposed to be helping counties.
Well, I'm just thinking, it, it's odd for them to take that stand, when you look at, at the number one priority project, here is Waterloo like thirty-five, which is being engineered in, in utilities and all that as we speak, so that's an expense that that hundred and eighty-five thousand could go towards, correct?
My thinking is. Common sense thinking is, but...
But no, they're looking for ways to take things away. They, they really are looking for ways, I believe that in my heart of hearts, because we stood up and told them that several times. We stood up and questioned their stupid regulations a couple of times, and they've had to back up and back off a couple of times. But now, they're gonna do everything they can to make things live tough on, on Logan County. I, I, I am very heartbroken over this. This really, it, it causes me grief and angst a bit. I, I can't believe that we allow state agencies to run over county governments like this. But in, in Oklahoma, it's typical, it's just the way we do business. And I, I don't like to accept it.
The state takes a do-as-I say, not-as-I do approach to county government, and, and that's...
Absolutely.
Really exactly the way that it works. But we have four priority projects, one number one being Waterloo thirty, an I thirty-five exchange, which was a priority for ODOT.
Well...
On for twenty-two, so I don't understand why the hundred and eighty-seven can't cover engineering or...
By definition, by definition, all SERV projects are prioritized by ODOT, because all SERV projects are based on the priority of the Transportation Commission, not the Board of Commissioners.
This is alcoholic beverage. I just think that's...
And they use, they use that against us to, I'm sorry, ma'am, but they use that against us to, to say, "No, you gotta do it our way, because it's, it's our rules." But we'll keep cutting ribbons, having drinking punch, eating cake. How's your act? Donuts.
Cake donuts? They had chicken wings and nice catering for thirty-three, bitch. It was, it was good.
I see they're out there working right now.
Yeah, and they're out there trying to fix it today, aren't they? But it was a nice ribbon cutting.
They worked yesterday. I was shocked, I went over it yesterday and they were working.
But it was a nice...
A little spicy, but it was still good.
I think that cement's cracking, where they got all them chicken bones in there.
That could be, they buried them all right there.
Chairman, that alcoholic beverage task will complete the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion and a second to approve consent. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item twenty-one, consideration of possible action to approve claims for payments for September twenty-nineteen. Speaking of that, when are we gonna have a budget meeting?
I don't know yet. It's probably gonna be a little towards the end.
Approximately, I was just kinda curious.
I would say that third week of October is what I'm assuming.
Okay, okay, thanks.
But were you wanting to address that with them before that?
I'm sorry?
On the contract? Was that gonna be something that was addressed and worked out before we got to the budget meeting?
The contract?
With OIS?
Oh, no. No.
Okay.
No, I think all that's gonna work out, ma'am.
Okay.
We, we are, cooler heads are starting to prevail on that one topic, and I'll just leave it at that. We're, we're making progress.
So no amending?
No amending.
Okay. That was one of the questions before I sent revised numbers.
Sure. No, no amending. No, no amending.
That's more of a skate, did you? At District Three.
Slowed up on the middle of the table, finally.
That pesky rat.
Looking through, whipping through, whipping through.
They should see all these different ones over here.
The missies.
Missies?
I don't know, it's not missies.
Is that the sheriff's? Sorry, ma'am.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims.
Second?
The payment.
I have a motion and a second to approve claims, any further discussion? Here you go, now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item twenty-one, consideration of possible action on approving P-card payments for September.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second? I have a motion and a second to approve payment card transactions. Any further discussion? Here you go, now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Item twenty-three, we'll get to the end of this. Any citizen desiring to be heard, now, it'd be the time, if you wanted to chat off what we've got going on down your neck of the woods, to talk about that, sir. So if you, give your state your name and...
Sure, my, my name is Richard Olson, and I'm president of the HOA of Oakwood Creek, where there exists one road called Oakwood Creek Road in need of repair.
It's approximately a mile long.
No, it's a half mile.
Is it?
Half mile. Yeah, it's seventy-five thousand.
Oh, no, no, yeah, what's, what's interesting about yours is it's about thirty feet wide.
Exactly.
Yeah, it's a lot wider.
Seventy-five thousand square.
So it, it, it costs about the same to overlay as a mile. In any event, uh, they've got, they've got, um, base repairs that need to be done, which is why I was interested in, in opening this, because now, now we're going to need to go out and do some, and possibly do a bid for repairs for, for their road. They, they wanna do about an inch and a half to two-inch ultra, what I call a thin-set overlay, right?
Two-inch.
Yeah, to seal, to seal that up in there, but before that happens, there's a couple of spots in there that they've, like we've got everywhere, where the dirt's starting to come up through the asphalt, so you can see where it's leaching through there, so it's, it's penetrated the, the base. That doesn't need deep base repair, but it does need to be repaired and then overlaid. Um, they have taken a collection up to, to pay for a lot of what's going on down there. Trying to be a good neighbor to them, I've made the, a commitment to, to donate a percentage of funds, like you talked about before, Monty, when people do, you know, take up a big collection, we'll, we'll provide some funds, but the county can't provide all of them, and Richard and I've talked about this, and they're very understanding. But in any event, that's, that's why Richard came today, he's interested in how the sealed bid thing opens. Uh, we don't know what we get back on those sealed bids, so those, those are kind of a surprise to all of us. And so I'm gonna let you speak, sir, if you'd like to talk to the board and...
Well, I'd like, first of all, we appreciate your involvement, willingness to do this. And, uh, so yes, we've had a special assessment, we've been collecting dues for years, because we know that this is gonna happen. And in fact, we had a project that the county helped us with in two thousand and twelve. I came to a meeting in two thousand and twelve, got bids, opened bids, um, wrote the biggest check of my life to the county to pay for our part of it, and did that in cooperation, and got some funds from the county at that time. So now the road is in need of further repair. We did not do an overlay, that was repaired at that time, some milling, some full-depth repair, so now we've still got some of that to go on, but it's time for the overlay, so...
And, and we've done some patching and repairs.
Yes, you have.
In the cul-de-sac and some other areas.
Yes.
Over the last four years, it's kinda been one of those things, we've been, we've been patching, it looks like a quilt now, so we need to overlay it.
Yeah.
It's getting to where it looks like a, a quilt, so... So, Richard, I appreciate you coming to our meeting today. No, no, we weren't gonna get anything decided for, for, for your shit, uh, your project yet, but we will, uh, Ms. Cole does our sealed bids, and she's going to be, gonna be out for a bit, I'm not trying to make excuses for her, but we, we do need to readjust our expectations on, on when we're gonna be able to get that out. What I propose for, for your neighborhood is that we continue to work together, I will look, we will look for, you've already identified some contractors, we, we know some smaller contractors as well, and we will try and get some of them to come out and, and look at what it would cost to do what we think needs to be done there.
Okay.
And then we'll go from there. We, we may use our laid-in-place contract that we have, just to do, do it that way, it may be less expensive to do it that way, may be less expensive to send it out for bid, I don't know, but we do that laid-in-place contract for a reason, so we don't have to send this out for bid, because it takes a long, long time. Troy, how, how long does it take us to do this?
The soonest on a turnaround is six weeks, and that's pushing it, where we have to meet our publication requirements, and when you're dealing with a newspaper that only... And when you're dealing with a newspaper that only publishes twice a week, you know, sometimes that'll push stuff out. You have to allow enough mail time, response time. So the, the absolute fastest is six, it's probably a little closer to eight. The other thing I would mention is we are now at October and we're going to have a weather, asphalt weather issue if you were trying to spin this out very quickly.
It was supposed to be a warm winter.
So do you have a target date that you're looking at?
They wanted it done last year.
Yeah, okay.
Well, what, we're going to, we're going to get back out there and I'm, I'm going to look at what it would cost to put approximately 900 and plus tons, because it's going to be a little over that. Monty just ran the calculations for me. He's a really, really handy guy to have around. And, and that's, that's what it would cost. Our, our laid-in-place contract cost is about $80 a ton in, in that area for, for laid-in-place. So when you figure about, about 950 tons, times, that's, that's about what two inches would cost us.
968 tons.
So you're going to actually look at this as a two-way different deal, just go in with the contract we have-
Right.
Or bidding it as a project?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
$7,000.
Whichever, yeah, whichever makes the most sense, you know, financially for the folks.
And we'll need to do an interlocal?
Right. Right. But we've already adopted that road, that, that road.
Oh, it's county maintained?
It's county maintained, it already. Which they're nice enough to take up a collection to help. They, again, they understand the, the predicament our county's in as far as funds and-
They got that.
You know, we, we all try to be good neighbors with one another. So, Mr. Olson, again, thank you for, for coming. Anything else you'd like to say to the board?
No, no, just looking forward to it.
All right. Thanks very much, sir. All right. Item 24, comments, announcements, questions about a board of county commissioners. Mike?
Uh, wait until you go, please.
I'm sorry?
Nah, I'll wait.
You don't have it?
Come back to me, please.
You don't have it?
Do you wish me to continue?
Okay.
Please.
All right.
That's what I asked you to do. All right. Number one at the ACOG meeting, the SPP deadline is 4:00 PM, December 20th. I got a class when they start accepting applications, November 1st down at ACOG. You might be interested in that. There's some legislation coming up. There's some interim study tomorrow at 1:30 on a hazard mitigation district act, which would allow counties to have a vote to increase their, a bit of mileage to no longer than five years to build up a fund for hazards or for disasters that may occur so that then we can go ahead and fix things and not have to wait for years for the feds to reimburse us. There is legislation coming up that will require the chairman of the commissioners to go to a school to learn about CBDG grants in order to get those. Senator Bowles is pushing for that. There is a legislation, a push for anyway, to increase our amount that we can spend on an item without going to bid from $15,000. That's for the entire county up to $50,000 because it just hasn't been adequate. We had tried for more prior to that. Let me see here. Be one and a half to two mils on the county hazard districts rainy day. FEMA matches, has no city boundaries. And then Greg Tree, of course, is pushing for home rule. It was discussed that Title 19 already has that home rule, but it's not a reform that they're looking for. They want it restructured and they're primarily looking at the two largest counties, Oklahoma and Tulsa County, but still it would be a voter's people to go to a home rule. Anyhow, that's Greg Tree and he is not having an interim study. He is going straight to the bill. And I believe that's, oh, yeah, Senator Boggs is looking at a cap on our M and O and see if we can't get that removed instead of 2015. And so that's a problem. The 911 committee also may know that the texting for 911 is up and running. They've gotten a work fine. Their rollout date is for October the 14th. So we'll see, wait, it was 14, might have been 12. I think it was the 14th. Anyhow, they'll have a big PR thing on it and everything, so everybody will be informed. And really honestly, that's about all I have.
Thank you.
Mike? I have a question. If a city annexes county roads at any time, can they come back and just de-annex?
Well, that was something-
May I? May I? I, I've done a little research on this, as a matter of fact.
Good deal.
There, there was, there was top 10, top 19 kind of conflict sometimes, but what had happened was cities could de-annex a road as, as they incorporated, as they annexed an addition, they could de-annex the road going into that addition or alongside that addition. That was allowed to happen up until a few years ago and Troy knows exactly the date and she'll be able to tell you. I just wanted to, I just wanted to kind of re-incorporate there a little bit on her explanation. But anymore, they can't do that. They absolutely, municipality cannot annex part of a geographic area and leave the road out now. That was changed. So, so they can't do that anymore. They used to be able to do that, which is how we ended up getting some of that little area over on the south side of Gathrie, but go ahead, sir.
Well, some, some-
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm going to back out this morning. My next question would be, like, ODOT, they can just dedicate a road back to the county, 74D, which is what I'm talking about. Can the county just do that to a city, just dedicate it, what do you call it, so the county just-
Again, the state says do as I say, not as I do.
So the, the way it works, the state says that any, so Title 19 basically says that anything that's not a municipal road or a state road, it belongs to the county, it's on the county highway system. Now, just because it's on the county highway system, that means that the county can maintain it, doesn't mean the county has to maintain it because it's on the county highway system. County, that's where they, they get into privately maintain, publicly maintain, those sorts of things. So just because a housing addition street is on the county, officially on the county highway system, doesn't mean that the, the county is required to maintain it. You know, we, we do those sorts of things as we get time and materials, et cetera, based on availability of funds, right, Mike? But anyway, go ahead, sir.
So I guess my question is, the old 33 going into Langston, you had set the debt for county maintenance. ODOT gave it to the county.
No, sir. Langston did.
Well, I think it went to the county, then Langston annexed it.
I don't recall that, but you may be correct.
So now they tell me that Langston has de-annexed all that. Is that true?
I have not seen any de-annexation. You asked us to look unless it's happened in the last 30 days from the first time that you had asked. The law did change and, and I'm going to have to disappoint Marvin. I wish I was as accurate. My brain's been a little foggy lately. That says that when they de-annex, they cannot just leave the road, but, but there's a, a distance, right? They can if they go back half a mile or whatever, right? But they can't, they can't do 20 feet like they did up here at Cooksey that stuck you with Cooksey up there.
Right.
Under the old rules or the Davis situation where-
They can't do 32 feet.
They annexed it to, to get what they want, then they de-annex 20 feet from the right away. They can't do that part anymore.
Is the grandfather, I mean, there's grandfather in the-
Right, it was only from the point the legislation changed forward. It wasn't, I knew what was already done, so.
So like triplet. We don't have, we, we maintain triplet.
Okay.
And then we have pergrove there from Division over to Pine that they say their line is written on, which the statute says that they should maintain, but we currently don't. And it's in motion for item 25.
Chairman, can I, can I throw something out here under comments, please?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to say, and I know you all are aware, but I want to let it out, that Beverly Dean is my first deputy in the county clerk's office. She's worked for the county for 19 years and she's retiring. Today's her last day. She's been my first deputy since I took office in January '09. She has served the county extremely well. She's going to be very missed.
Yes.
So there's some cookies in punch and if you all want to stop by and, and wish her well, she has earned this retirement very much and she's going to be very missed.
Absolutely. Best wishes to her.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 25, consideration of possible action on adjournment.
I'll move it adjourned.
A second. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.